This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I believe we are on board. So, calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for May 14th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. If we could start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anybody here for citizen speak tonight, or formerly known as open time for the public, for those of you who haven't figured that out yet? If not, I have just two pieces of information for people, just to say that, don't forget that May 21 is our town election. I believe the hours are from 12 until 8, the elections here at Town Hall. Those that are voting by absentee should have their ballots momentito if they haven't. I think the timing is very tight because of our delays with our town clerk being incapacitated a bit here. So, those that may get their ballots by mail, I would really suggest you turn around and drive them and put them in the drop box rather than trying to return them by mail, because you might have a short, short time to turn around, just as a suggestion. So, that's just a thought. So, that will be on Tuesday, May 21st, and then before that on, let me not lie, on May 16th at 6:30, following up, and I'll make this announcement on behalf of, on behalf of the Bylaws Review Advisory Committee, there's a public information meeting and public input meeting on May 16th, which is Thursday, this Thursday at 6:30, here in this room to talk about the proposed tag sale bylaw. This is a new bylaw. People can come in person to hear about that and suggest, make their suggestions, and then there, the bylaw is actually posted up on the town website, on the bylaw advisory review page. When you type in bylaw committee, you should be directed to that page, and comments will be available by email. People can write in their comments until the end of the month, May 31st. So, all of that is advertised on the homepage of the town website, under the featured news and events. So, please take a look if you're interested in doing that. All right. Other than that, I don't think we're going to have any reports to Select Board tonight. We're going to skip over that and go right to our first agenda item, which is talking about an appointment for our Assistant Treasurer/Collector. So, John, you want to introduce that?
I'll make a motion for purposes of discussion to take up collectively a emergency two-week appointment, PCF, for Angela Buldok, full-time, emergency, not benefited, 31 hours a week, position of Assistant Treasurer/Collector, grade four, step 11, at an hourly rate of 2506, and simultaneously a PCF for the same individual, same terms and conditions, but making it full-time benefited and benefited eligible and permanent position.
All right. So, we have a motion for court. We have a second in purpose for discussion?
Second.
Second by Dan. Okay. Jen, would you like to come and tell us a little bit about this? I think we've seen Angela before.
Yes. Hi, Jennifer Day, Treasurer/Collector. So, this is a PCF to put forward Angela Buldok. She did work here before in my office back in, where is it? She was here from 7, 2022 to 4, 2023 in my office. Since then, she has been with the Wilbraham Regional School District, working as their payroll coordinator, and I'm looking to hire her back. What are the questions?
Okay. Anybody questions?
I'm sure there is questions.
I definitely have some, but go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chris.
Questions, so that, from what's on her resume, so, thanks for providing all that background information. We've got it from July 22 to 4/23, but if I recall, she came in twice. She was your clerk, Assistant Clerk for a short period of time, left, and then we had her come back to be that position, and then she got promoted to the actual Assistant Treasurer?
The reason why she doesn't have a break in service there is because when she left and came back, it was a reinstatement, so she didn't lose any, like, seniority time. So, our personnel policy says that if you leave and come back within a certain amount of days, I believe it's 90, that you get to keep your seniority time, like, where you were when you left. So, that's why there is no break. I do believe that, not sure why she didn't add Assistant at all, because I do believe when she came back, it was the Assistant position that she was being promoted to.
Yeah, that's what I remember. She was just the, she was the Assistant Clerk for both positions, or she came back in as the Assistant Treasurer/Collector, because I know at the time, we debated quite a bit about, okay, somebody stayed with us a short time, left, coming back in. We were in an emergency situation, like we often are, and we decided to take her back in, but I don't recall how long she stayed with us that time, and then she's gone again and...
So, when she left, when she left in between, it was in November, it was November of 2022 that she left and came back.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, she was with us maybe another six months or something before she went to Wilbraham, perhaps?
So, with this PCF, I think it is noted on the PCF that you have, that it would be contingent upon the Select Board approving, approving the Admin Clerk position, still stay at the 1821 per hour for 30 hours per week, and funding that in fiscal year '25, because as of right now, that wouldn't be funded in fiscal year '25.
So, fiscal year '24, what are the $2 rates that were in the budget for this, for this position and for the Clerk?
So, for '24 right now, so '24, the Assistant was making 2215, and the Admin Clerk was making 1821.
And then, do you know offhand what that, what the increase for both those were used to create the budget for next year?
Yeah, so, I do. So, when I created the budget, I had the Admin Clerk at 1876 and the Assistant at 2234. So, basically, if we hired this person back at the 2506, it would cost $3,430.59 more than what was budgeted. That's if you left the Admin Clerk at the 1876. If we had potential to hire back an Admin Clerk, say, at the 1821, you know, that would cut off $1,002.24. So, then the additional funded needed would be 242835.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, at the meeting right before the town meeting, in our little Select Board meeting, we already approved the emergency and the short-term, the temporary PCF for your clerk at 1821.
But she's just, she's literally temporary and she's...
Right. I mean, it was a, it was a two-week emergency and a 12-week temp.
But she's, may not even stay. The 12 weeks, you know, we just talked yesterday, she wants to help out, but she wants to be retired, so...
But that was, that was at the 1821?
That was at the 1821 for this fiscal year, yes. So, she's not sure how much longer she'll commit. She had a little conversation yesterday. She's not, she didn't really say when, but she did say she wants to be retired. She wants to...
So, you're still recruiting on that one, anyway?
Yes. Yeah, and we did, Scott, Saturday night, an interview today for that position for the Admin Clerk, so...
And any other interviews for the Assistant Treasurer?
I had one scheduled for this past Friday, but she, they didn't come. They didn't show up. She did email. She was just not able to commit to work at this period.
So, if I'm sort of understanding what you're saying here, the, you want, what's on the PCF says you'd like to be able to pay this person 2506 per hour.
Right.
But we've only budgeted 2234 or something right now, for this current year?
Correct.
So, I guess my question would be, why the big...
For the upcoming year.
For the upcoming year?
Yeah, for the upcoming year.
Okay. Currently, yes. Currently, it's at 2215, which is what the person who left was paid at. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
So, you've budgeted now for a little bit more, 2234 is what I understand, but you're requesting to pay her 2506.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 2294.
2294?
I'm blind.
Okay. For FY, yeah, for FY '25, okay. But you'd like to pay her 2506. So, I guess my questions are, what has been done in terms of, I don't know, certifications, other qualifications to make her be more than $3 from the program stuff?
Well, I feel like when we hire, we decide how we're going to place someone on the wage scale based off education and experience. And if you look at her experience, you know, just in the city of Westfield alone, she was there from 2013 to 2022. She had a year of experience here, a year of experience now for Wilbraham, doing payroll, which is, you know, a huge part of what that position does. Like, everything that she does in Wilbraham right now, those are all duties that that position, that she would be hired for, would be doing. You know, then going back, she has experience, like, in personnel...
She was Personnel, Personnel Clerk and Office Manager.
So, I placed her on the wage scale at a step 11, even, and that was honestly, originally I placed her at a step 12, but that didn't get past the Personnel Board. So, I went down to the step 11. I do think that she has more years' experience than that, and I think, you know, you can see that on her resume, but trying to...
So, yeah, so I guess, and this is not a question for the Treasurer/Collector, because she, this isn't, falls outside her responsibility, but if the sole objective of the Town Accountant Signature here is to tell us whether or not there are funds available, I want to know why the Town Accountant signed off and endorsed these things, because we're relying on his signature, and clearly, there's not enough money there. Otherwise, PBB wouldn't have stopped it and said, "It's contingent on the Select Board doing it," which leads me to my next question. How much did we squirrel away for the Collins report to be able to allocate and make these wages? Was it $25,000? Right? So, this is 34.
Or 20, I think.
This is almost 12% going to one single position, which, whether it's warranted or not, I mean, I, 22, 23, 25 dollars, I think, is a reasonable dollar amount. That's not my argument. My, my argument is, if, if we, we're being forced into a corner to approve this, to make sure the office runs, but we're taking 12 and 1/2% of all the wages that we want to write everybody and put it into one position, and our Town Accountant appears not to understand what his signature represents on this document. Further, I emailed the Town Accountant and asked him this question more than three weeks ago, and I've yet to get an answer. And I'd like to remind the Town Accountant on public record that he is appointed by the Select Board, day-to-day reports to the Town Administrator, but he's appointed by this body. When he gets an email from a member of this body, he should answer it and/or respond back and say, you know, whatever, give some sort of response. But now I'm sitting here, three weeks later, and I don't understand why he signed off on this. Leads me to think, okay, maybe there's another line item in the Treasurer's office where there's money that can switch over. I doubt it, but if that's his logic, I mean, you could, you could speak to that one, Jen, if you have...
There's no other line item in the Treasurer's office?
Right. But it's, it's roles, responsibilities, and everyone needing to know what their spots are. I don't blame Jen for trying to get somebody in her office and pay the wages, you know, with the exception of Westfield, because there were multiple jobs there, but at least it was ongoing in Westfield at the same time. I don't know this person. I'm just looking at, I'm just looking, right? Westfield, they were in Westfield from 11 to 13, 13 to 17, little gap between 17 and 19, but then they went back and stayed. Other than that, they haven't been on the spot more than a year to get a review.
And the gap was for, like, family reasons from Westfield?
So, I, so I don't, I don't question the length of time, or, you know, your explanation about the scale and that. I get that. It's the matter of the money, and it's the matter of, in my view, this never should have got to PBB, because the Town Accountant shouldn't have signed off. We should have been having this conversation back when we were trying to do with, what to do with this extra money. But now we're here where we are, and those are just my initial, and again, I go back to what I said the last time, I believe Jen wanted to bring this person back on. I, I don't want to micromanage any of these departments. If the department head says, "This is the person, this is the best candidate I have, this is who I want, and for 2506, they're going to come in here," I take them at their word. The other question is, how do we find the money to get this? And I have a hard time taking 12 and 1/2% of the whole pot. When, when are we going to see the Collins report? Even if, even if it's not ready for public display, I would think that the Select Board should be able to get it through executive session and at least take a look at us. We'd have an idea. Where does this, my question would be, where does this 2506 fit on that range for the Collins report? It might be perfectly acceptable and hit that midpoint, and all, all the stars have aligned. But I don't know that. I don't have that information. And now I'm, I'm back where we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, because if we vote against this, there's going to be continued delays in the Treasurer's office. We're not going to get the financial reports. You can't really blame Jen because she's short-staffed, but if we vote for it, what are the other non-union members? Is it going to create all of a sudden a pile of work?
We're going to have more people coming to ask for the same kind of thing. I mean, that's going to be a...
I want to support you, Jen, but I just don't know how to do this and be fair and equitable to everybody else.
So, I mean, right now, you've budgeted for 2294. That's in the budget for '25, right?
Yes.
Right. I mean, like I said, there is the possibility of, let's just say, when I do hire an Admin Clerk, I, you know, try to keep that at the 1821 rather than moving it up to 1876. So, that would be a brand-new person. That position is more entry-level, you know, they only need a high school diploma, one to three years of office experience. So, if I did that, it does take away $1,002.24 from that $3,430.59.
That, just that change of 50 cents an hour makes that much difference?
How many hours is a position?
It's...
30 hours, huh?
Not the Assistant. I don't, I don't think the Clerk is.
Yes, it's at 30 hours a week.
It was up to 30 hours, is what we...
Yeah, it's 30 hours a week for the Clerk.
So, 30 hours and 50 cents difference. Is that right?
Yeah, so it's $1,002.24. I calculated it really quick right before.
Right. 50 cents times, 50 cents times 30 hours is $15. Times 52 weeks is $780.
Hold on one second. Let me just see what I did.
Although it is 55 cents, but...
I did 18. It's 50.
And the other lines that are in your budget are Collector expenses and software support.
55 cents.
Unless something, and a certification stipend, that's, is that a yearly stipend for yourself?
Yes.
So, unless something were to happen at a future town meeting where we can ship some...
It's $861, so I don't know why. I just did this really fast. Right before I came in here, I was like, "Oh, I should calculate that," and apparently I, I don't know, I do.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Josh. Stephen, go ahead.
You asked for questions.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm new. I apologize, but it sounds to me like you've seen this movie before. And what I wanted to ask the Town Administrator, acknowledging that you're much newer than I am, what is our minimum standard for posting job opportunities?
I believe it's five days?
It's, no, it's two weeks, I believe.
Ten days.
Ten days, yeah.
But really, what is the required outreach? You know, when I first came into public service, it was getting into the Bay Street banner and getting into, on a bay windows, I think, whatever it was. It's an entirely different world now. But as much as I applaud the initiative, department heads go out and get the help that they badly need, the question is, how many different avenues would be productive to promote an opening?
Yeah. So, this was posted on Indeed, the Mass Treasurer/Collector Association, on our town website, you know, on our board out front. So, I mean, it is out there, and it's been out there for...
That sounds like preaching to the choir to me, if I might be so crude.
But where else would you post it?
I will say that the bylaw that governs this says it has to be posted publicly for a minimum of 10 days, which are 10 working days. It has to be on the city website or the town website, which is considered the public domain, and posted on the Town Clerk's office. So, Indeed is above and beyond the requirement, and the, and the Collector's page as well.
It's above and beyond, yes.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate...
Whether that's sufficient or not is a different story.
I appreciate all of that. My worry is it's not.
I mean, where else, do we have any other ideas of where you would like me to post it?
You know, I've, many decades had a practice on this, but I know that there are, you know, standards.
I, I go back to, I think the way, I agree that the wage is out of line, but where is the Collins report? We're going on two years now.
Scott, can you speak to the Collins report on this position, or...
Yeah. So, for this specific position, there's a lot of issues that I have with what was presented so far by the Collins report that I can, want to do a whole presentation of. I still don't have the job description. I still don't have the methodology that'd be used in determining where the suggested positions actually fall. I just have some of their raw data. Just two days ago, I found out how they selected the comparable communities, which I have, again, some issues with, which I can kind of go into at a later date. But the, the raw data that, from the communities that they did select, the minimum average was 2894.
Right. So, again, two things along this line is, is one, I guess, we're going to use this information for the purposes of bargaining with non-bargaining units, right? Because the Collins report is addressing those members of our employment who are not covered by a bargaining unit, which is one of the reasons, preparation for negotiations for executive session. So, we, I, I would encourage, I would ask the Chair to, to set up a time in the next four weeks or so where we can have an executive session and go over this detail. And I'm sure after seeing it and hearing the Town Administrator's concerns, we're all going to be in agreement on this. But let's see it, because then I would suggest that the next course of action is to make a motion, whether it's supported or not. But if it's supported, to authorize a letter be sent to the Department of Local Services to ask that the, the fees that they paid Collins on our behalf be revoked, because we didn't get what we want. It sounds like we didn't get what we asked for and we paid for, but they already cashed the check.
I don't know that we've paid anything yet, however.
We were awarded a portion of the grant, of the grant money that restricted us from using that money for anything else. I think it was $17,500. And I'm willing to bet, say publicly, that I bet you they're using this same report to mirror the report they're going to issue the town of South Hadley. But, again, my frustration's going up, because if this really should be around 28, how, how much of other adjustments do we have to do for the other employees that are in here?
I mean, I would just have to say, in the Collins report, my concern is that they didn't use standard best practices that other compensation surveys have used.
All, all the more reason to bring that to the light now in a public way and document it, publicize it, give it to them, because other communities are relying on them to do this as well. And they're, they're just two months behind us, so...
I would, yeah, I, I believe that the issue of the Collins report is an important topic and is something that we should address over the next month, particularly to this, this specific hiring. I see that you have, you have taken the skill set of this individual and compared it against our, our current ranking salary matrix.
Right.
And you've established what is appropriate salary based on that. So, I, I guess, for this instance, I don't see anything that is, anything that is out of line with what you're asking here.
Yeah. No, my, and my only question, based on what was said, was just that the previous person who's just vacated the position is being paid $3 less. So, I was asking whether there had been any special classes, credentialing, certifications, anything that this person now has that would warrant us to say...
I mean, this person has a vast amount of experience compared to the person leaving the, the position.
There you go.
This, the other person that left the position only had one year of municipal experience prior to coming here.
So, the, so we're not, I, I don't see how we have to readdress any other current employee salaries based on this decision, because this is taking the skill set of...
But we don't have the money in the budget for it right now.
Right. So, the only way to, the only way to approve this is the additional funds we'd have, we'd have to identify a funding source.
So, that's, that's the question, is, do we want to hire this individual who has been calibrated against 20-whatever-dollar, $25 for this position, or do we not? Do we want to wait for another candidate who is less qualified, has less experience, who would come in a lower paid grade?
And that's the problem. The job's not, it's not an easy position, and you really do need an experience. So, we hire someone that's qualified, they come in, and you know, it's, it's tough for them. It's a lot to learn. It's, you know, a little overwhelming for some people, I think. It's, and it's the Assistant Treasurer/Collector position, so that position is supposed to be able to take over my position if I should be out. It needs to be a strong candidate, you know?
I would like to get the, the best paid person we could afford. Can we afford this person? I think that's where we're, where we're at.
Madam Chair?
I mean, I think that, sorry, go ahead.
If we were to pay the Assistant roughly $3 more than the budget was, would we not have to suffer the consequence of paying the Admin $3 less per hour?
To fit within the current budget, yeah.
Well, I mean, yes, but that's, that's 21 cents above minimum wage. When McDowell's is paying $20.
That would knock us back down to $15.
So, let's play it out.
We would forego having any Admin. Jen, are you prepared? Is this emergency hire so skilled and experienced that they can do the work of two people?
I mean, I'm not asking for, to forego my Admin. I mean, it is 2294 was budgeted versus 2506 that I'm asking. So, it's really like $2.12 more an hour. So, I budgeted for 2294. It's $2.12 an hour, but normally I sit on the PPPB board, and I do know that when people come in, what we do is we score them based off of their experience and their education. And for every other department, they're able to place them on the scale, and they're able to hire that person based off of their qualifications, because they happen to have grant money, or maybe they have a larger wage line.
That's the key.
But it's not fair that departments like mine, and my department is, like, vital to this town running, can't hire qualified candidates, because I'm budgeted to the penny.
Right. But the, but the flip side of that is, it's not fair that you're tagging a Select Board account number that's outside your jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And something that, you're asking us to take money we specifically set aside for a project and allocate 10 to 12% of it just to your one person. That's not fair for you to put that on us.
I'm not asking for that. I'm not sure where the money would come from. I'm not asking from that particular account, and I'm not sure, like, exactly what, you know, like, I didn't say where the money would come from. I just know that I do need a qualified candidate in there, and I know how we normally place people. So, my thing is, is how can we place certain employees coming in one way on the wage scale and others differently?
There's a whole different situation.
So, I go back to my fir, my first statement, is this conversation should have happened prior to the Town Audit Accountant Signature getting on there, because that's when it would have been said. It would, he would have pushed back and said, "You don't have enough money. Well, look at here. I'm underspent here. I'm going to do a transfer. Here's my request to the Finance Committee," and then signed off on it. As far, from what I can see in front of us, that, that work was not done.
Well, and what's, what's not clear, too, because, I mean, this came out two weeks or so before town meeting. This was signed at PQB back in end of April. So, this is while we were still on the final throes of the last, you know, Managing the Budget Balancing Act, which I don't know why it didn't come out at that point in time.
So, I get, I get my, my other question is, do you, do you know that whether, if we figure out some way to make this thing happen here, that this individual will even accept that hourly rate?
She would accept that hourly rate, yes.
And how long can we count on her for staying this time?
I mean, I can't guarantee that. No one, I mean, no one can guarantee that. I can't guarantee that anyone's going to stay.
This is the third time back in, and I, you know, I have a little problem with a revolving door. I'll be very honest with that.
I mean, I can't guarantee that anyone's going to stay. We have a revolving door, you know, throughout all of Town Hall, so...
Not quite so much, but...
Okay.
Can I ask another question? Maybe someone said it earlier. How, do we have any other, do we get any other candidates in when we put the job posting out? I'm just wanting to say, say hypothetically, say, okay, $25...
I'm just wanting to say, say hypothetically, say, okay, twenty-five dollars is not really what we can afford right now. Did we have anybody else in, in the funnel that we would, are going to be interviewing, that is potential other candidates? Or is this the only one that made it past the screening?
There was one other candidate that I was going to interview, and she did not come.
Okay.
There were no other qualified candidates.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we've only really tried Indeed, two or three other kind of online things that I see advertised all the time, whether they're any good or not.
I mean, I'm sure, like, we always end up, you know, going into fiscal year twenty-five, there's going to be accounts that we're going to be able to transfer out of at a special town meeting. We always transfer in and out of accounts to cover items, so maybe out of the health insurance account, maybe out of other wage lines that aren't being used, the assistant accountant, like, that's budgeted, and it doesn't look like there's any, like, priority to hire that person.
Well, I think that is going to be a priority, that's definitely my priority.
There's like extra money in different lines, you know, so.
But, I mean, can we hire this person on what you've currently budgeted and look forward to a special town meeting to then do some, some transfers to get her to the salary she wants?
In order to take the vote tonight, you have to identify a funding source.
Exactly.
You can't, it, it, this is not winter rose. We cannot deficit scott.
I know. That's my point.
So right now, I need to work on the conversion. I haven't been doing any recons, I'm not, I don't have a chance to enter any revenue. I haven't had a chance to do any, like, MTRS reporting, Hampshire County Retirement reporting. I'm not even answering all of my emails, like, right now. I'm doing three jobs, like, and I can't keep that up.
How we can possibly find what this person wants to be paid.
It just seems like it's always so difficult.
This is not planned for in the budget, which it should have been planned for, because it came in well before we finalized the budget.
And I did mention it.
So procedurally, would this, would budgeting figure out which, which bucket of money this would hypothetically come from? Would that be the select board's responsibility, or would that be the finance committee or something that, that would figure out which, which fund we would allocate to? I'm wondering for the ones to, to, are the ones that are responsible for answering this question? Kind of asking a procedural question.
I guess that's, that's a point in time. Was it prior, if it was prior to the budget, then yeah, that would have been through the finance. But now that the budget's been voted on by the town.
Now it's up to us.
Well, yeah, but I, well, depending on what we identify as funding source, finance may need to weigh in, but.
So if I understand the motion, it's for both items, both the emergency and the permanent, I would be more comfortable, and I don't know if this helps, but addressing the emergency appointment, because I understand that we couldn't commit on the permanent position.
But, but doing that, if the person was to go along with it, only give them two weeks, and they'd have to give notice at their other job. Come over for two weeks. The emergency appointment is two weeks to allow the select board to meet.
No.
Scott, any ideas? I mean.
I mean, as far as the budget goes, there should be enough money with the vacant position to cover the additional funds for this year. For, for next year, yeah, we would have to identify a different type of funding source.
I mean, there may even be money just from not having an admin clerk. I mean, right now, we've only had one candidate that we interviewed, you know.
We did advertise on Indeed, in the Mass Collectors, Treasurers. We didn't advertise in the MMA, but I'm not sure if that would really, for this position, would really yield a lot of candidates. If it was like a permanent, like, you know, treasurer collector is a permanent position, that might be a little bit more.
I think advertising an MMA or treasurer collector should only be done after the wage is adjusted. Because if you continue to advertise at this wage, you're not going to get it. The twenty-five, the twenty-eight, whatever that is, you're more likely to get somebody. Because what you're going to do is, you're going to get somebody who, who is disgruntled at an abutting community, give or take, within a radius, and they're going to apply for the similar job because of the higher rate. But I would just, I would, I don't disagree that there's, there should be enough money, because the, the jobs have been open for a couple of weeks now. Right, at least the, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So there's probably enough, more than enough money to finish out this year.
Yeah, definitely for this year.
But if you go into, there's, there's an, there's an MGL. We go into July first, and it's not there, that person's laid off, because there was no appropriation. There's no, there's no, well, let's wait and see what we can do. And, but, there we can, that's a job of the town accountant, and perhaps we need to send him that MGL to make sure he's aware of his duties and obligations.
So question on that, we post the salary range with the position? Because that seems strange, that someone would apply to something that's outside the salary range, you know?
Is the, is the salary range always not necessarily in the job description that's posted, is it?
I think I did put it in there, yeah.
Usually it's a range, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to thirty, eighty-three, maybe.
Eighteen sixty-five to thirty-eighty-three.
Oh, we shouldn't post a range we can't afford, right?
You can, but there's a way to do it. It's not, it's not at the end of the race. You line the ducks up ahead of time, and that's why those checks and balances are there. Because, again, had this come up in April, had it, had it, at least had it made all the way up here to a public session, you know, at the end of that budget session, we put money in different buckets, so there's money there. This could have been addressed in advance, you know, and I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers anywhere. I'm just saying, at this stage of the game, this work should have already been done.
So would that be like part of, like, when they go to the, the Policy and Procedures Board?
Before they even get there.
Even before they get there, okay.
Once that town accountant signature is on that form, the wage that's being asked for, we have been told, yes, there is money to pay it.
So we have the checks and balances of having the town accountant's signature, it's just that he may not have been aware of all the requirements this time. Is that what happened, really?
I don't know. I was not at that physical meeting.
I just want to say, next time, say whatever the job is.
Yeah, I mean, I've certainly seen others where it's-
He's done the math on the back.
That has been stopped. I mean, Bradley has stopped it and said, no, there's not enough money. I mean, I've seen those that have come forward.
Yeah, we just got to make sure.
I don't think it's not that he didn't know, maybe he just, I don't know, I don't know, but we can't speak for him, I don't know.
So if the job gets posted for whatever the range is, we should be able to support that range. So I, I hope that our process, our policy for posting new jobs includes that.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think I can pull it up real quick, but in our final budget, remember when we came out to expenses and revenue, didn't we have like six hundred dollars that was sort of-
Two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight, extra?
That we didn't use, yeah, but we, we upped, we, we increased, we put another twenty-five thousand into the finance reserve.
So we used some of that, now, okay.
You know, so.
Yeah, so we probably will have the money at some point, it's just that to get us from now to then is, is the biggest question.
Well, I don't think there's any question that there, in theory, there should be enough funds available to finish out this fiscal year.
Right.
Madam Chair, could we send this back for the town administrator and the accountant to work with the department head and figure out the source of the funds? Because it's clear this is an essential position, and I'm not sure that-
I don't know that we're going to solve it.
We've had an essential process to find this repeat candidate, but we're, we need to move forward, and so identifying-
I would propose a different, a different course of action. I don't think we have time to send this back and wait, because the, the job is vacant. And when, when you asked the question earlier about not filling the admin spot, isn't that the payroll clerk?
No, the assistant.
The assistant treasurer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you got one person in the office doing it, you've got, you've got a, a, a well-intended retiree that came back to pinch hit for a little bit, but is ready to get out of the game. We're going to be down to one person, we're at the end of the year. You know, there's no way, there's no way that one person or one and a half people can get all the work done in that office. There's already a backlog, it preuses. I'm fine with, I mean, I don't like this, I don't like operating with a gun to my head. I'm fine with approving the twenty-five oh-six, but I want the primary source of funds to be the reserve fund. Because I want to force this Collins report to get to the, get to finance committee and get us together and do what's fair and equitable for everybody that's on there. I don't, I don't want to go another year singling out individuals and trying to get creative with how we do this and do that to maintain staff in here. So I'm okay with pushing, again, department head's saying it's twenty-five oh-six, this is what she needs to get the job in there, we need the body in there, fine. I will amend my motion to say the primary source of, of funds for next year will be the reserve fund, which requires the finance committee to agree to. If they fail to agree to that, then they can go and take the ten percent of the money that we took from everybody else. But everybody else is going to know, yeah, you deserve your raise, but you're probably going to have to wait, because we were, we were forced to front load this for a position, but the body needs to get in the office.
Can I add one more thing? Unlike usual, timing-wise, hearing all that, it looks like PQB is scheduled to meet Thursday.
Right.
Days from now. So they are meeting pronto. If, if this could be looked at with Scott and Bradley tomorrow to identify something. And following up, I'm just answering Stephen's question.
You're right, but then, then you're going to send it back to PPP. Jen and I are two of the five people on the PPP, so I'm sure the same conversation will happen. We can't, PPP can't identify a funding source. So if there's one on the form, it'll go through, right, and come back to us, then we're going to meet the following Tuesday and take a vote. This person still has to give a two-week notice. And so now we're at June first, four weeks before year end.
So the revised motion, if I understand it, takes us through the end of the current fiscal year.
There's, there's, I believe there will be sufficient funds in there with the unspent wages that, to be able to cover this accommodation.
Within the treasurer's office.
Thank you for that detail. That carries us through the current fiscal.
Till July first.
And then contingent upon concurrence of the finance committee, we would use finance reserve to fund the increment or the position?
No, the difference.
The difference for FY twenty-five.
Which, which if Indeed, following on Jen's math here, if she can find the, the clerk at the eighteen twenty-one versus the eighteen seventy-five and save that quote-unquote seven hundred and eighty dollars.
That assumes that the Collins report says that sixteen dollars is an appropriate wage for the assistant, or eighteen, whatever it is.
It's eighteen apparently here.
Right. But the reason why I'm saying going to finance first is that preserves the money and the intent we want to do on Collins. And if we ran short, that's where we would be, in my view, where we would be going if we, if we came up a couple thousand dollars short. To, because we as a town have got to stop treating these as one-offs. We've, we've got to right the ship once and be done with this.
And this, by doing this, though, with new recruiting, if, if the current person in the clerk's office is going to be leaving, and you've got somebody else hopefully that will be applying.
At the treasurer's office.
You said you interviewed today, or?
We did interview today.
Okay.
Yes.
Possible candidate, or?
Possible, yeah, yeah.
So, but that person would-
They're watching tonight.
That person would need to be hired at this, this eighteen, which, the eighteen twenty-one or the eighteen seventy-four?
Eighteen twenty-one, it's looking like at this point. I mean, that's, I mean, I guess, based off her experience, I feel, right, Scott? Yeah.
Right, then that new person coming in, okay, and then if there is an adjustment on the Collins report, then it can happen with everybody else.
So then you, we're still at somewhere around that two thousand dollar, twenty-four hundred dollar gap, from what I'm understanding, taking the clerk position into, into account, that what we're still short to get to.
Yeah, so we're still short.
A couple thousand or so.
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five, sixty-nine.
That's about half of what we would have to, if, if we weren't using the wage line that we reserve, that's taking half of the reserve fund.
Worst case, if everybody starts on July first. Right.
Which this person, I would assume, would.
And, and everybody stays for the full year.
I mean, maybe it does, you know, it takes a while to get through all the boards. They might not start on July first, and they have to give a notice, like, once it's finally approved, like, it's possible it could get extended enough to save some money even from not having that position filled, you know?
And nobody should give notice prior to the select board signing off.
Right, exactly, so by the time that happens, because it's going to be after personnel meets yet again, right? Probably not this Thursday.
And I'm assuming this person working in a school district, I mean, they're probably going to want to hang on to her through the end of the school year. I wouldn't be surprised, you know, how, how quickly she could actually really give her notice to, you know.
She said she was going to give two to three weeks.
Oh, sorry.
She said she was going to give two to three weeks, she was thinking three, but was going to possibly only do two, just because she knows of my dire situation. And she knows that I can't possibly do all those, like, positions alone for very long.
So just one other quick question, she's talking about things that she's worked with for the, I guess, for payroll, various programs she's worked with.
Right.
Infinite Visions, Frontline, Time Clock Plus, has she had any experience with VEDAR at all, or?
You know, I'm not sure about VEDAR, she's used, I know she does use Harper, so that's what we do payroll through. So she knows Harper's. I know she's used Munis mostly in the city of Westfield. Doesn't sound like Will Breham uses VEDAR, but honestly, none of us have had experience with VEDAR, so.
By one, we're supposed to be converting to VEDAR soon.
Yeah, but no one has experience with VEDAR in our town, so we'll all be training together. They're going to be doing trainings and.
Okay. So.
So I amended my motion, but I didn't, here you go.
We have the amended motion, we don't have a second on that.
Second amendment.
Second by Stephen. So that amended motion allows us to go forward with this appointment of Angela Bolduc at, for both the emergency and the full-time at twenty-five oh-
Six.
Twenty-five oh-six.
And that the additional funds needed for fiscal year twenty-five be first pulled from the finance reserve, pending finance committee's approval. And then if not, the last failsafe will be the select board's contingency, or one-time funds set aside for the purposes of righting the ship for all non-union employees in town.
That is the motion I seconded.
All right. And in the meantime, though, that, before, if this person comes on this fiscal year, it shouldn't be very, wouldn't be very much. It would be maybe a couple of weeks.
I don't think there needs to be any transfer of money for this year, though.
Don't think so at all?
Because the, the job's been open for two or three weeks now, right?
It's been even longer, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Both of them have really, yeah.
Okay.
If you could only encumber wage line, wage numbers, you can't.
That'd be nice.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the floor in a second. Everybody kind of clear on that motion? All right, could I call for the vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye, although I have my reservations, which I've made clear. Thank you, we are done with that.
All right, thank you.
All right, and we can move forward with that. All right, I think that was our only main business in the open session. We will be going into executive session. It's right now at about six forty-five, so we will be adjourning and moving into executive session. This is per MGL, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This is regarding the public safety building site. So we will be adjourning and not returning to public session, and if I could have a roll call vote, please.
So moved. Second?
Lumbra, aye.
Johnson, aye.
LaValle, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, we are adjourned and moving in at seven forty-six. Thank you very much.